All right, everybody. We think it's right at seven o'clock, so we'll call our meeting to order. Jazz Orlok, for all time's sake, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
I'm going to ask everybody to remain standing for one minute after you pledge to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I would ask everybody, I'm not sure if you've heard this ad news, sorry, Shirley, but Cal Hemingway passed away on Saturday evening. For those of you that don't know, Cal was a longtime servant to our community and our education and our kids and our schools and our parents for decades and decades, both on the school board and on the Granby Education Foundation and many, many other roles. So if you're willing, I'd ask everybody just to take a moment and remember Cal and send whatever good energy you can to his family. Okay, thank you for that. All right, next, before we get to the minutes, we have a proclamation that we would like to present to Jazz Orlok, our student, one of our two student reps who's graduating this year and moving on to their next challenges and run, right?
Yeah.
All right, so come on down, I'm going to read it. And we'll take a picture with the board, and Mom and Dad, you come up, take whatever pictures you want. Reading things is actually one of my weaknesses, so if I screw up, forgive me. So I'm just going to read the proclamation, it comes from the board, and it says, whereas the town of Granby recognizes that Charles "Chaz" Orlok served as student liaison to the Board of Selectmen for the past two years, and whereas Chaz Orlok's ability to balance academics, sports, and school activities while also serving as an active member of the Board of Selectmen is admirable and can be witnessed through the following: Whereas Chaz Orlok was captain of the varsity basketball team during his junior and senior year, and captain of both the soccer and baseball team during his senior year. And whereas Chaz Orlok is a member of the National Honor Society and took on microeconomics as an independent study and sat for the microeconomics AP exam, we're going to ask you to do a presentation on that tonight. Sorry, surprising. And whereas Chaz Orlok is class treasurer for the class of 2024. And whereas Chaz Orlok is a referee for youth soccer and volunteered for the 2023 empty bowls event at the high school. Now therefore, I, Mark Fiorentino, by the powers vested in me as first selectman of the town of Granby and on behalf of the entire Board of Selectmen, do hereby proclaim that Charles Orlok be recognized by all residents of Granby for his service to the town as a member of the Board of Selectmen and his accomplishments as a student during his four years at Granby Memorial High School. And it's signed and dated this third day of June 2024. Thank you, Jazz.
Mark, can you do it?
I can do it. I'm sure I will.
Yeah, close to each other, go ahead, try and say, thank you. Very good.
All right, everybody, grab it together.
Yeah, I know you're going to send it to me anyway.
Stand wherever Shirley thinks you can stand.
Yes.
I'm going to go stand in the back over here.
Mark, be closer to him.
Closer.
Okay, we have this mic, you can't see.
That's good.
I think you better be right there, okay, that's good, yeah, yeah, okay. All right, and there we go. Okay, one, two, three. Okay.
All right, Mom and Dad, turn around, look at your picture plan.
It's got work.
No, it's not. Jazz, fast.
We got to get a little better at that protocol, that. Jazz, in all seriousness, thank you for everything you've done for our board and for our town and for the school. You want to say anything? Don't you tell us where you're going?
I'm going to Swarthmore College in Pennsylvania and plans to operate there.
Awesome. Well, congrats. You stay in touch?
I will.
Yeah.
Thank you guys so much for the opportunity.
Yeah.
It's been awesome.
All right.
You want to study economics?
Hopefully.
Good choice.
Houston, is a good choice to study economics?
Yeah. It's a great nature.
They told you there's a lot of math involved in economics, right?
Like mathematics.
All right. All right, we will move on to the approval of the minutes. The first set of minutes we have is from our regular meeting on May 20.
Move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 20?
Second.
Any questions, comments, suggested revisions? All right, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, the next set of minutes is from our Neighborhood Assistant Act public hearing, also on May 20.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the May 20 Neighborhood Assistant Act meeting.
Second.
Any questions, comments, suggested revisions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, I don't believe we have any suggested appointments, no old business, so we'll move on to the regular business. The first item is a presentation from our school projects building committee chair Toby Proctor and Mark Magliaccio. You're welcome to add anything you want. Catherine, you have a, okay, so come on up, Toby, to the podium, and thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Just a reminder for everybody, this is kind of something we started this year, we're asking our various different boards and commissions and committees to come and tell us what you've been working on, what you see coming, so have at it.
Thank you very much, and thanks for having me. I'll be, next slide, please. Toby Proctor, Two Silver Rock, North Granby, Connecticut. Today, we're just chatting a little bit about the school building committee, which has been actually surprisingly up and running for four and a half years at this point. As you know, we did a townwide present, or a townwide bond referendum in June of 2019, and we, at the time, the manager, John Ward, gave us this charge, which essentially tells us that we were created to, essentially, we were created to prioritize the list of projects that were given to us by the CPAC committee, and then prepare and evaluate any bid packages that that's, that we would ask for any either architects or any construction groups to do the building, and then also report any completions of the projects to the Board of Selectmen and hand them over to the Board of Education when they're complete. That was the, that was the charge that we were given. Next slide, please. Our current members today are, I'm the chair, Mark Magliaccio is the vice chair, we have, we had former BOE representative Jenny Emery, and now current Board of Education representative is, not, sorry, Donna Nolan, and Bill Kennedy is the Board of Finance rep, and Eric Brown is our industry expert, and then our ex officio and professional advice members are as follows: Sheri Burke is our superintendent of schools, Mike Walsh, town manager, we have Mike Dunn, who is the principal of GMHS, and Shannon Sullivan is director of facilities over at the schools, and then, I know this is not open now, but I'm, sorry, I don't know who the new business manager is, as of a couple, a couple weeks ago. Just a quick note, we actually have had three superintendents while we've been aboard. We had Dr. Idley, he was, he was very instrumental in putting the CPAC list together before we got it handed over to us, and then Dr. Grossman had taken over shortly before we stood the committee up, and now we have Sheri Burke. And then we also had three town managers at the time as well, and two business managers. So we've gone through a whole fun, fun bunch of folks to re-educate us and guide us in the way at the same time. Next slide, please. This, this slide just talks about the, the actual, the bonding wording that was, that we all voted on in June of 2019. I just want to bring to your attention, there's a lettered list there, the science, career in technology, education spaces, performing arts facilities, library and media center, kitchen facilities, athletic fields, and then infrastructure and systems at various campuses. I know this is written relatively broadly so that we could fit a whole bunch of stuff in, so I think that actually fit the bill for what we, we got. Next slide, please. So what we did get was a list of, this list was created and compiled by the CPAC committee, and I apologize if the, if the look is a little weird, but that's exactly how I got it, so I typed it up exactly how I have it and how it was handed, handed to us. So as you can see, there were no, I have not put any associated estimate of costs or what we estimated to get reimbursed from the state. At this time, I was, I wanted to make this a bit more broad conversation about what we've done over the last two years, instead of actually going by exactly what we have spent and how much money is left. So we, on purpose, excluded some of that from the presentation. And the, I just want to make, assure that, fully acknowledge that we are needing to discuss to the Board of Selectmen what, what projects have been completed and how much they cost at each, so that we could have a reconciliation of exactly what the bond money was. So I recognize that will be forthcoming. Next slide, please. So this one, this is the same list, but actually has, or the committee was asked to prioritize that list because the $7.1 million, which was bonded for, very quickly was obvious, and actually, the then-town manager, John Ward, asked us to prioritize because the estimated costs for all of those projects were a, almost a back-of-the-napkin type thing, so we have, we recognized they needed to be prioritized and attacked via that prioritization, because we probably would not have enough money for all, all of those 13, 13 lists, 13 items. So how we did that was, we recognized the middle school roof and the high school roof were the oldest and most straightforward, we said straightforward then, but they actually became not so straightforward. Middle school roof was, was at the time, was 26 years old, and the high school roof was 20, actually 19 years old, and I'll get back to the timing of that in a second, but that was why those were one and two. Number three, the, the building one staircase, if you recall, there was a safety issue with how the staircase in building one was just a mess and egress was a problem, so both, actually, that and then also the kitchen, number four, were noted on the New England Association for Schools and Colleges as a, they weren't going to decertify us, but they kept mentioning that every single time they came, did a recertification, so we're like, okay, those have got to be a priority for the, for our committee to attack first. And then you'll see there, number five is the instrument and ensemble room, and, well, sorry, 4A and 4B, 4A, 4 and 5 were essentially co-located in the, in this high school, so we, when we did finally get a architect, they suggested we kind of bundle that in as one specific phase of the project, and it did make sense, because had we done two different sections of the building, it would have been probably not as cost-effective as it was. And then, as you can see, six was the library and the media center, seven was the storage space and auditorium access, storage space for some of the, I think those performing arts, and then auditorium access in the back is very hard to get stuff onto, onto the stage, so they wanted to have some kind of, a bit more industrial way to get back onto the stage from the back, backstage. And then eight was relocate the science classrooms, nine was bathrooms on the athletic fields, and then 10 was more, more light bulbs. And as you can see here, I have highlighted the colors that we've actually done, and either partially or partially funded or mostly finished, also for the, for the college and career-ready. And, I'm sorry, it goes without saying, at any point, please interrupt me if you have any questions. Any questions on that? The reason why three and eight were together were, those ended up being, because of the staircase was, was a safety issue, it, it became easier to parcel those off and pay for them via mostly, well, I say, yeah, it was actually mostly small cat fund, the BOE small cat fund, and then some of the bond fund, and they were co-located, so the, those science classrooms were right next to the stairwell, so they could be done very quickly Any questions? Yes?
Before you, before you go on, is, is there a reason you didn't put the boilers on there, is that just because they're too recent?
Too recent, yeah, I will, I will discuss boilers, but yeah, that was the original list that did not have boilers on.
All right.
A couple other comments on this were, we, we did want to prioritize, yeah, the safety first, and then those four, the first four were all the New England Association for Schools and Colleges was the big, the big push for that. Any, any questions on this? Next slide, please. So taking the, the order from what we did last year and what we did this year, realize that we've done stuff before last year, so what we were working on at the beginning of last year was kind of the wrap-up of that phase one portion of the, of that list, and the phase one was the cafeteria, the kitchen, culinary arts, which was the career-ready, and then chorus and band room. So those were all co-located, as you know, in the, in the high school, and it was essentially a brand-new, you know, gutted all the way to the ground, and we had to build it all the way to the, you know, it was not a renovation, it was essentially new, new building for much of that whole area. And then please keep in mind that, that space is actually also used for, for a lot of public gatherings, so we recognize it was probably important for us to, to attack that as well, because I know the public is always asked to come into the, the commons space when they do things in the, the auditorium or they do presentations at the high school. The other thing, the, again, the concept of the reconstruction was that it was important that that area was taken care of all in one, one time and in one construction phase. Next slide, please. This, this is my, my point about it being essentially from scratch, which actually, you know, we had absolutely no kitchen in there. When, when people see the word kitchen on there, okay, it's not putting a couple ovens and a, you know, microwave in there, it's, it's talking about making an actual kitchen that works for preparing and also, you know, anything to do with serving the food as well, but also the, the commons area that was the cafeteria was completely redone as well, and also the, the ceilings had to be gutted so that we could do a lot more HVAC and a lot more plumbing in the area for, for gas and, and also air. So this next part is about the high school roof. The next portion of the process that we were working on last year was the high school roof. A little history here was that, to us, the high school roof in 2022 was at that point now 21 years old or 22 years old, but for the state, because we, and someone can explain this a little bit better than I, I can, but because our Board of Select, Board of Ed did not sign off on it 16 years ago, the state thought it was only 16 years old, so we were not allowed to get, we were not allowed to actually put, put forth a budget, sorry, a project request for this into the, into the state, so we had to go through a whole legislative process to get that appealed and also a waiver put in, put in place and prove that it was actually at that point 22 or 23 years old at that point, so that we could get it. So that, that took up, as you can guess, any kind of legislative activity, takes up quite a bit of time, those are probably a nine-month period before we could get the state to say, okay, you can actually have a, a, a project number and you can go out to bid for this thing. And the other, the other problem right in 2022 was that, as you, as we all remember, the supply, supply issues with, because of COVID was ridiculous at this point, what we thought was going to, originally going to be about 2.3, no, sorry, $2.1 million, actually, we had a, a new quote that came in, came in close to 3.9 million because of all the new, all the supplies that were completely overpriced and hard to get, and so we started to, I wouldn't say panic, but we started to think, maybe we shouldn't do this in '22, maybe we should wait for one more year. At that point, we actually didn't have to do it in the summer of '22, because this all has to be done when the students aren't there. At this point, we didn't have time to put a bid forward or get any bids back before the summer of '22. So that actually worked in our favor by the, by the time we did put a bid package together in January of '23, the prices had come down drastically, and we were, we were able to get about a three, sorry, a $2.4 million bid from, from our construction firm. So what happened in 2023 is we put the, October, sorry, by August of 2023, it was what's called complete or substantially complete, and then unfortunately, we started seeing leaks all over the place throughout all of 2023, and we went through, we went to the manufacturer, the architect was going back and forth between the builder and the manufacturer, trying to figure out the root cause of this, and thankfully, because it's under warranty, it was under, it was to no cost at Granby, we could, we could get, we could figure out what the root cause of that work was. It was taken care of in most of the summer of 20, or 2024, all of the leaks. We did have, I think we had a, a big storm in maybe April timeframe or maybe end of, end of March that had slush involved, which we were happy to, surprisingly happy to have because it was a good indication that, that all of those repairs were, were complete and, and there was no more, no more leaks at the time, so. As of about two weeks ago, I think all the, the rework was completed, which was almost 40% of the, the roof had to be re, re-flashed and also more membrane put on top, but then they, they put black membrane on, and we, we, we bought a white roof, so we said, we're going to put it white, white membrane on, and that added some, some, some time, but not, not cost of Granby. So we now have a completed white roof with no leaks at this time. When we do have the last final inspection, that's supposed to happen probably in the next week or two, we'll hand that over to the Board of Education as completed. Any questions on this? Next slide, please. So now over the next couple months, next several months, there's roughly about $549,000 left in the bond, from bond proceeds, and then the Board of Selectmen has asked us to fund and oversee the installation of the three boilers in the middle school. That's critical, you, you all know it very well because you just voted on it last week, so, a couple weeks ago, and the contract is a fixed $424,000 bid, I believe it's signed, essentially signed and delivered, it's not, not delivered, but, yeah. And then that's going to commence in the summer, because again, it's a summer activity for the school, and will be complete by the end of the summer. Any remaining funds will be more than likely returned to the, to the town because there are insufficient amount to have to be able to attack anything else left on that, that list. And then at that point, we will ask you what our future is as a, as a committee, so. Any, any questions for me on that?
Is that the last slide?
Yeah.
So we'll go, we'll walk down, before we do, I just, I want to make sure that, I committed to Toby that we wouldn't give a lot of details about the final costing, because they're going to come back and give us, as Toby said, a very detailed description of every, every single project, and as you'll remember, when we were doing the question for the voters to transfer some money from bridges that we didn't need for bridges, that I asked the committee if at the end of the process, they would be willing to give us an honest, straightforward, you know, debriefing on what we might do differently in the, in the next process going forward, they're committed to doing that, so that's a future date. And having said that, does anybody else have any, any questions or comments?
So there were projects listed on the original bond package that weren't done. Are those still on the school's list of projects that they'd like to have completed?
I believe there are, yes, I believe they are. Although, Mark, I mean, Mike, I know you went through a process of asking the Board of Education to come up with all of their lists, I'm not too sure, I haven't seen the list, so I'm assuming it's, it is the same since they...
It is.
Yeah, we didn't, we weren't able to say.
Thank you.
They have no questions, thank you.
I don't have any questions, but I want to thank all of you board members again. This was a tremendously challenging committee to sit on. I mean, all of the committees have to work hard, the building committees in particular, but as you mentioned, you guys went through the kind of the perfect storm of just one unpredictable thing after another with terms of COVID and the complexity of those projects, and wrong, right, or indifferent, we, we did what we told the public we were going to do, we asked them to approve a broader list, knowing that we were not likely to build everything on the list, and you guys were challenged with trying to prioritize that, and then of course, you didn't even count me and the town managers that you...
No, that's right.
So there were three superintendents for our town managers in a three-year process, is really, thank you very much for the commitment and the effort that you guys put into managing those projects. And again, just recently, when we asked you to step up and manage the boiler project to see that that be done, never hesitated to say, yes, I'll do that, so thank you very much, and so we're very grateful for the work you guys did.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's great that you were able to step up and do the boiler. Just out of curiosity, the white roof, is it cooler?
It is cooler, and it's also, I believe, I think that's the main reason, but it is more, I think maintenance-wise, it might be a little bit easier to, to see either cracks or, or finishes as well, so that might be a portion of the reason.
Okay, thank you.
No questions, thanks for your time and your work.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to also thank you Toby and Mark as well, Donna, the other members of the committee, Eric and so forth. The boilers were important to the Board of Education, and to see the work that you did on the high school roof was also yeoman's work. This is a, a good introduction, I'll just make a, a minute or two comment. At the next Board of Selectmen meeting on the 17th, they will receive a document that represents a 10-year capital improvement plan for both the Board of Education represents a 10-year capital improvement plan for both the Board of Education, including those projects that weren't done, as well as the town. It's a total of about $78 million. And it's a process that should keep pace with the upcoming budget. I know we just settled the budget, but it'll just be, you know, the next few months where we're into the fall again and starting again. It's that quick. But there's $33 million and change on the board side of items that, you know, don't need immediate attention, but it'll allow the town to prioritize those, and about $44 million and change on the town side totaling about $78 million. And as part of the budget process, the CPAC Committee could kick off. It's up to the Board of Selectmen how they want to reconstitute that, when they want to reconstitute that. But it's a good opportunity to get introduced or reintroduced to the issues that the town faces with respect to infrastructure and then take it as a decision as part of the budget. Do we fund it with leasing? Do we fund it with cash? Do we fund it with a long-term bond initiative and so forth? It's more of a process-oriented solution. And, you know, I want to thank you, Mark, the other members of the board, for, you know, launching it, if you will. And we'll see how it endures over the fall and into winter.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Right, anything, Mark? All right, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the presentation from the Lions Club Chairman, Tony Capelli.
Thank you, Board, for giving me the opportunity to talk about something I love, and that's the Granby Lions. The Granby Lions have been here in the town of Granby, serving our community since the 1950s. And we still have original founding members in our club. It's just amazing. We most recently have added members. We'll be inducting five new members tomorrow night. We inducted 11 new members last year. We're the fastest-growing Lions Club in our district. So something to be really proud of. And it kind of reflects the spirit of volunteerism in our town. And really, it's great to see. People come out to our fundraisers, they always have nice things to say. One of our members just said to me that Lions make serving fun. So that's really what we strive to do and that's the knux of what we do. I'm going to list some of the things and some of the projects that we've been doing over the past year. But it's really, we're Granby-centric, but we also know that there's need outside of our community. So we have been focusing some more donations on more places that are in extreme need, where the people of Granby who support us allow us to donate funds for those projects as well. In particular, there was a project called Boots With Care, donating boots and socks and gloves to the homeless in Hartford. So the Granby Lions made a donation to that and we sent members down to help distribute to that need in November. There is also a food drive for Food Chair, the turkey trot. So Granby Lions collect turkeys in front of Geisler's and we send that to Food Chair. So that's another way we're serving our greater community. We donate to where there is need for disaster relief. So Lions is an international organization, and especially if there's need within the United States, if there's a tornado, a hurricane, they call all the Lions Clubs and say, what can you do to help make this, you know, better for the people there? And the Lions is able to distribute their funds very, very quickly. So we're one of the first people there with funds to be able to help the community right away before maybe some other funds come in from the government and other sources. This fall, we kind of partnered with the American Legion, which was new. We had a cooperative collection of toys for the Connecticut Children's Medical Center. And we also brought in Amazon, their warehouses, and they collected toys for us. We wound up with over 1,000 toys priced at over, maybe $15,000 was our estimate, that we brought to the children's hospital. And they go to the programs throughout the state of Connecticut where there's children in the hospital or their siblings that are coming to visit those children for having something to give them and to occupy their time while they're at the hospital. We have volunteers at Waste Not, Want Not that go there every week to help feed the people of Granby. We're organizing a blood drive on June 20th. That's coming up around the corner. It's going to be at St. Therese. We donated and cleaned and maintained the town gazebo in the center of town. We keep a watchful eye on that. We maintain flags in the center of town. We just ran a bunch of things in the ads in the drummer, asking for donations to sponsor a flag. And we have a bunch of new flags up there and they're going up and down our main streets here. We want to extend as far as we can, especially north of the town. But it's a long process and the Department of Public Works has been very helpful in helping us put up the flags and take them down and organize them. And so that's been a really cool project. And a lot of our neighboring towns also do that. So it's nice to see that Granby also participates in that. We collect glasses throughout the year. We just had a shred day on May 18th as a community service project. We just held a diabetes guest speaker at our club to learn about the causes of diabetes. And we learned about lifestyle medicine. So that's something that we'll be exploring at the club for our members and maybe getting it out to the town as well. We're really interested in keeping us healthy as well. We sponsor a children's Christmas party for children of special needs. That happens in mid-December. And the Lions fund it, they organize it, and whatever school can send their students to it. It's a two-day event. We have a band and all that kind of stuff, food. And the children and their caretakers come to the special event and it's really talked about and looked forward to within the classrooms of our area schools. We do children's eye screenings in September and October. We screen all the children in our Granby schools as well as the daycare facilities. On donations, we've been fortunate to be being able to have some very significant fundraisers. So we have increased our donations. This year, we added Camp Rising Sun. It's for children affected by cancer. We made a donation to them. Granby Park and Rec came to us for benches for the new walking path in the park, in Sandam Brook Park. We were able to fund a couple benches. We helped with the Granby High School baseball and softball teams buy uniforms. We sponsored, well, in partly sponsored Safe Graduation Night at the high school. Connecticut Veterans Eye Research Foundation at Yale and at UConn, we made donations to them. They originally developed a control for glaucoma. They were the first ones that discovered that. And it's not cured, glaucoma's not cured, but Lions contributed to making glaucoma a controllable illness for people. We helped fund the high school Leo Club. We have a club at your high school and the Leos are pretty active this year and they're just getting going. We'll hope to see more from them next year. But we helped the Leo Club. Robotics Club comes to us, we support them. Tomorrow night, we'll also be giving out scholarships to three students at the high school. So that's a big part of where our funds go that we collect. Connecticut Lions Low Vision Center, we support that. That's where people that are in need of low-vision devices, like magnifiers, maybe bump dots and just articles of daily living that they can't get elsewhere, can come to the Lions Low Vision Clinics and an occupational therapist meets with them and is able to give them some things to take home to make their life easier. So that's what we support in that. I'm also on that board. Granby Little Lake, we make donations to them. Granby Ambulance Association. And our newest initiative, Veterans. We've been, there's what they call a Veterans Stand Down in the fall, in September. And it's operated at the Veterans Hospital in Rocky Hill. And Lions bring all kinds of things that veterans might need for daily living. And we make donations to that and we, at each meeting, we collect items for distribution at that event. It's really a cool thing and the Legion is really excited about that and they're really behind us on it as well. So we've gotten some Legion members to join the Lions because of that, but it's really something that we feel is important to help serve the veterans in our community. As far as fundraising goes, a couple of biggies are the Christmas tree sales that you all know about and help support, for sure. Our other big one was the Mother's Day Hanging Basket Sale. That's another really big event. We also have a golf tournament coming up. We have a bird seed sale, Easter candy sale. We do things like sell hot dogs in front of Geisler's for donations. And we might go to the baseball team, the Yard Goat game, and work there for donations. So there's a lot of different streams of income that come into our club and it all goes out. So whatever comes in, goes out. And in this year's donations, we took in as much as we gave out, so plus all the services that we provided. As far as club administration, we received, we're recognized throughout the state as being an excellent Lions Club. Our district governor's coming to our meeting tomorrow night. Every time we go to an event, oh, Granby Lions, you know, we hear such great things about you. So it's really great to be part of such an active and growing club. Just a couple of things I didn't mention. We are part of 23B, Zone Three is our group. The state is divided into three districts and A, B, and C, so we're part of B. And we have state conventions and all that, so we all know each other and we work on projects together as well. That's where we're going. As we progress into next year, we're always looking on how we can help the residents of Granby. That's really our primary focus. And if anybody, you know, is in need, we always ask them to, you know, see the services in town and they'll let us know if there's need. But we will go about and continue to make donations and serve the people of our community as well as the greater Hartford community. Is there any questions about what the Lions do or what we stand for? It's just, it's a great pleasure to be able to present to you and to our town on all the great work that the Lions do. I'm just very happy to be president for this year and this upcoming year. And I think our energy is really contagious and it's really a lot of fun. Thank you very much.
I don't go anywhere. We'll start down this.
Just a statement, really. I mean, thank you for what the Lions do. I only see a fraction of it. The early childhood vision screenings that I see as a doctor are very helpful and it's very helpful for the child and their, you know, further in their education, if you catch something early, which you guys do quite often with the device that you have.
Yeah, that little machine is really great.
Yeah.
And it's easy to use.
Yeah, it's terrific. And like I said, for that kid, it can change their educational trajectory, for sure, if you pick up a vision problem that early, so.
It's always surprising to us. We always find some, you know?
But yeah, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for sharing. I didn't realize how wide your reach was, so it was interesting to learn that, so thank you.
Yeah, more and more so. You know, there's great need in all of our area.
I'll just echo and do, Tony. I wanted to share a quick story. So I'm a member of the Lions and I think Tony did a great job of kind of summarizing. That's not even a complete list of all the official things they've done for Granby last year. Something I watched the club do unofficially, and it's just a common example, is I think Chief Samson came to make a presentation...
He did.
...a few months ago. And he had just mentioned in passing that occasionally, when they're out, they see families in need in Granby. And the club didn't hesitate to say, whenever you see that, you let us know what you need and we'll get you what you need. So thank you for all you do.
Well, it's the people of Granby that really support us, that allow us to have the funds to help others. So it's not, it comes, the Lions volunteer and they manage the funds coming in, but it's the people of Granby that support our fundraisers that really the money's coming from. So it's thanks going to the people that support our fundraisers.
Simply thank you for the contribution to the community and the support. It's taken a lot of work and we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Very interesting presentation. I didn't realize that the Lions and Granby did so many things. You sound like you're very busy. Are you having success attracting younger members to the organization?
Well, younger. I'm getting my cronies to join, for sure. So, yeah, we're trying to attract younger members because the work that we need to do is, could be heavy at times, moving the Christmas trees and all that. And people are busy, you know, especially as they're raising families and such. But there's no, like, age that you should think about joining Lions. We'd love to have people of any generation. That just adds diversity to our club meetings. And I think there's a lot of hype at our meetings now. Like, people are talking before and after and it's not static. And there's new ideas being presented all the time. So there's plenty of room for growth and we'd love to have more members.
Great, thank you.
Sign you up, Peggy.
We'll send you an application.
Yeah, I couldn't do that younger category.
Oh, just thank you for all the operational things you do, but it's easy to see the capital things you put in, like the gazebo. And thank you for offering to work on benches, done it on your walk in the town park. So thank you.
Of course. Thank you very much.
Anything else, Tony? Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is consideration of a request from the Simsbury Granby Chamber of Commerce for the sale and consumption of alcohol at Sandam Brook Park during their annual event, Celebrate the Valley. There is a memo, this looks pretty straightforward. Mike, do you know if there's any, this is familiar to us? Is there anything new this year that you're aware of?
No. This is the same Celebrate the Valley as in past years and they are moving forward with it.
Anybody have any questions or concerns? If not, I would accept there's a motion in our backup.
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen approve the Chamber of Commerce formal request for alcohol sales consumption for Celebrate the Valley during September 20th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. and September 21st from 11:00 a.m. to 9:45 p.m. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, the next item on our agenda is reservation of a special request alcohol permit. Again, backup contains an explanation of the user and what they've done to get this far. There are no questions or concerns, there's a motion that I would entertain.
I'll move the Board of Selectmen approve Ms. Alino's formal request for alcohol consumption during the event, rental on Sunday, September 24th, 2024, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Second the motion. Any other discussion?
Yes, can I interrupt? The date should be Sunday, September 15th. So if the maker of the motion would amend that and be second, accept that friendly amendment?
That's fine. Sunday, September 15th, 2024, from 12:00 p.m.
I accept the second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, the next item is UPSU Local 424, Unit 42, I'm sorry, Unit 49, our Public Works contract approval. And Mike has done a memo for our backup that highlights the agreed-upon provisions. You want to highlight anything further, Mike?
Sure. Again, most... Again, mostly for the folks in the audience, this is the Public Works Laborers Contract. It covers about 14 members. The length of the contract is five years. The salient points are the PPO insurance plan, which is extraordinarily costly, will no longer be offered, ceasing on June 30th, 2024. It will be replaced with a high deductible health plan, where single individuals pay the first $2,000, and non-single pay the first $4,000. That will be effective July 1st, 2024. That should see our medical costs be driven down substantially. The high deductible health plan premium will be a flat 15% across the board through the life of the contract. The town will cede for the first two years 100%, and then in year three, 75%. Year three and four, I'm sorry. The contract expired June 30th, 2023. The initial negotiations were not productive, so the State Board of Mediation and Arbitration assigned mediator Sean Lennon to assist, and that resulted in this agreement. We negotiated this contract in compliance with MIRIT, which is the Municipal Employees' Relations Act. That means once the bargaining units ratified it, we have 14 days to get it to you. You don't need to act on it tonight, you have 30 more days, so you can, if you wanted to, this can go through July 3rd, 2024. There's a proposed motion, and I just, before the board acts on it, one way or the other. I want to thank Finance Director Kimmy Chang, HR Director Krista Schaefer, and then Management Analyst Betsy Mazada, who helped in the negotiation of this. And finally, I want to offer thanks to the folks from the bargaining unit. It was productive and professional. Once we got down to the negotiations, their contributions as hard-working Public Works laborers should not be missed by this community.
Anybody have any questions?
I just had one. Just out of curiosity, on the holiday schedule, the town, does any of the town employees have Juneteenth back?
They do not.
They do not?
No. We maintained that 13 holidays, there are 11 listed, and there are two that are up to the employee to take. And the discussion was, can we have a 14th holiday? And the answer was no. There's, we'll stick to 13. If you want to swap one out for Juneteenth, you can. Nobody chose to, so we're, we've held the line at 13, and there's some flexibility with two floating holidays.
Makes sense.
Any other questions? Comments? I would echo Mike's comments about our Public Works team and the bargaining unit. Very grateful for their willingness to sit down and work through these issues. If everybody's comfortable, I will accept the proposed motion.
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen approve, as presented, the attached United Public Service Employees Union Local 424, Unit 49, collectively bargained labor agreement dated July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2028, and to further direct the town managers to sign and execute the contract, and to make any funding transfers necessary to effectuate the terms and conditions of the contract.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, next item on our agenda is American Rescue Act, also known as ARPA update and reallocation. I'll let you go in a second, Mike, but again, our backup. Mike's done a great job of detailing it. We've been talking about this for some time. So for those in the audience who've kind of been following, we went through a process a couple of years ago to identify some priority projects to spend. We had about $3 million in ARPA funds to spend. Went through a process to initially prioritize those projects. Vast majority of them were complete. We knew once we completed those, and we had firmed up costs on a couple of others, that we would have to make an additional allocation. So we're going to go through the process of doing that. We have about $1.6 million to reallocate. Very generally speaking, the list that the team has put together is just what we've been discussing, where we've identified items on our capital improvement plan that we would prioritize and spend some offer money on, because there's a deadline, so it makes sense to spend it there. And one or two of them I recognize, at least, as being lower priorities on our initial list. So my intent is tonight, if you have any, any general questions or questions tonight to get them out, but to give everybody a couple of weeks to kind of examine it, we're going to spend some time on it at our next meeting. We'll, we'll go through every project, make sure everybody fully understands the scope as we understand it now. I will probably, we'll, we'll agendize it as a workshop, so the public can also provide any feedback that they have. And then I'll, I'll turn it over to Mike. As I said, there's, Mike's done a great job of not only making the presentation of some suggested reallocations, but walking us and the public through the entire history. So if you're following, you can, the backup contains just about the entire history of time we've got here, so.
Thank you. Yeah, just a few comments, some will echo those you just made. The town related to COVID relief was in possession of $3.6 million, 3.555 exactly. You've already allocated in Phase One, and virtually completed 1.9 million of various projects, and it runs from AEDs to emergency communications, to middle school HVAC, and so on and so forth. That leaves $1.647 million to allocate in Phase Two. And there is some urgency, because we have until December 31st, 2024, to obligate these funds. Obligating is a little bit more than just issuing a purchase order, it's almost issuing the contract. So we're a little bit under the gun. Granby falls under what they call the $10 million final rule, whereby the full allocation can be treated as lost revenue, allowing us to direct the reallocation to general government administration. Two keep, two important things to keep in mind, ARPA funds cannot be used directly or indirectly to reduce taxes, and they cannot be used to pay down debt or fund pension liabilities. So Phase Two projects, which are being put out to you for digestion, and then perhaps the public comment, include technology investment focusing on replacement of old technology, some audio and visual equipment to enhance the resident experience, consultants to work for various town development projects, a considerable amount of capital items, about two-thirds of the 20 or so items related to Public Works, Parks and Recreation, Police, and Library, capital items that will check off the 10-year capital plan once they're done. And then as a catch-all, just so we fully exhaust the allocation, we're not advocating for more road paving, just a different funding source in the event we have to use it. That would be determined at the end, but again, it's a catch-all to make sure that we fully obligate the funds by the end of the year. So happy to take any questions, but the attached memo in the worksheet with it is pretty self-explanatory. And at the next meeting, I'll be able to go into a deep dive on any one item, and the directors will be here to speak to it as well.
Any questions tonight? I would ask you guys a courtesy, if, to, to take, as you're reviewing it, and to go back and look at the ARPA capital plan, and if, if you want to advocate that something that's on the plan be put on this list that's not on the list, let, let Mike know as soon as you can, so that we can have the right people here to discuss the details of that. Does that make sense?
The capital plan that he's going to give us next time, or that's out there?
Ours hasn't changed, so it's the one that's out there. So our half of it is the same. Everybody good with that?
No.
All right. We'll move on to the next item, which is consideration of an RFP for the Granby Center Master Plan. Again, I will take a quick stat at this, and then let Mike fill in the gap, so you guys will recall that after a series of meetings and public outreach, and I think we did at least one joint session between our Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen established the Granby Center Advisory Committee and gave it a charge. We have been working over the last six months, plus or minus, to complete the initial charge, get an outreach to develop sort of a vision and a list of issues that were important to our community as we consider the, the center. You know, also probably remember that our Plan of Conservation Development specifically calls for the center to be the, the focal point of our, our growth in town. So the committee's recommendation is that we hire a consultant to help us actually develop a usable, workable master plan for the center, based on the input we received. And you will see that the funding for that, or an estimate for the funding of that is one of the items on the ARPA list that we're going to consider. Whether we approve it or not, we might as well do the RFP to get, get a feel for if there are consultants out there that are qualified to do it, and what they would charge. So, anything to add, Mike?
No, other than, you know, we, we used our best judgment when we allocated a portion of the ARPA. If the, if the ARPA consultant money doesn't pass, we would have to find another bucket if you want to move forward. But again, that's a decision for two weeks from now, but they're interrelated. I do like to move things concurrently rather than serially. When you move things serially in a municipal environment, it takes longer. So in this particular case, it makes a lot of sense to kick off the RFP and then deal with the funding in a couple of weeks.
Any questions? Comments?
I noticed that the draft RFP doesn't include a number, a cost. Do they typically include a accurate seed number, for example? Or you just wait till the proposals come in?
I have not ever seen one where we say you have to come in under this number, that we ask everybody to give us their best and final quote. I think that's where this is kind of played.
I'll just add an editorial comment. Too often, sadly, I see the consultants come in and say, "How much do you have?" So to the extent that we don't set a budget, I think it's better for the integrity of the project.
Good point.
That's good.
Okay. So if everybody's comfortable, there's a proposed motion which just authorizes the issuance of the RFP. Anybody willing to make that motion?
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen approve the issuance of the RFP for the Granby Center Master Plan.
I need a second.
Second.
Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Next item on our agenda is our Town Manager's Report. Take it away, Mike.
Few items to pass along. In the package dated June 1st was a four-page management letter. I won't go into the specifics, but there's a few items I want to highlight for those that are listening at home. You had before you today the Public Works Contract, and previously, you had the Dispatcher's Contract. In the next meeting, two or three, we will be sending you the Southern Police and Town Hall Labor Union contracts. I want to thank my partner over there, Scott, who successfully handled the Town Hall Labor Negotiations. We're simply exchanging the redlined versions, we're waiting on the ratification. Once we pull it all together, we'll have those too. Much like the other settlements, there are market, at-market labor increases in there for the employees, but the important thing is we converted the full town over, from the PPO to the high deductible health plan, and that, that will help tremendously moving forward. I am working on a paintings, refuse, collection contract extension. I've invited Payson to benchmark our energy usage and suggested sustainability opportunities. Had the opportunity to meet with Catherine Deviney, she's the West Hartford Sustainability Employee on Energy Strategies. So I'm getting excited about that. As we start to clear the deck of, of things that we're working on, we'll do some, what I consider smart things, to work on energy and bring some, our, our Conservation Commission together and see, see where they want to go. Abby wants everybody to know that the proposal for fresh yeast is out. It was posted in the Hartford Current, and RFP was distributed directly to 12 interested parties. Mandatory site visit for respondents on June 6th at 9:00 a.m. to tour the building. Proposals are due July 10th. The building official issued the last two permits for the Station 280 development. With respect to the Finance Department, Kimmy has completed preliminary audit work for the fiscal '24 year, working closely with the auditors, and the final field work will occur in August. Something I wanted to highlight for the residents, and also just bring it to the attention of the board. Out of the Assessor's Office, we completed 118 state elderly applications, resulting in tax credit benefits of $68,000. And then there were 170 local elderly applications, resulting in benefits of $298,000. And those are direct offsets, some as much as, you know, $1,700 to $2,000, that, you know, for the folks that are struggling on a fixed income, there is a tax relief program out there. So I want to shout that from the highest hills.
Mike, can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Why is the state number so low relative to the local?
Um.
I thought it would have been the other way around.
It's actually an extremely generous program that the town of Granby has on a local basis compared to the state, which is also income-based. But Granby's income, I believe, is significantly higher. They go above, over and above the state program.
Got it.
So generally, if you're on the state program, you're eligible plus many more for the Granby program. Captain Laflamme and Officer Dufrenne attended the career day at the high school. That's great, because when you can get local young adults interested in careers in their community, that's only a good thing. Public Works is preparing for the Road Overlay Program, once the money becomes available. Library, grateful to have a group of community members, this is from Ember, that volunteered to support a strategic planning initiative, and the group consists of a mix of adults, teens, parents, board, and staff. And then finally, out of CNDOS area, Human Services, Youth Services, Parks and Recreation, Senior and Social. The waterfront opens on June 15th, daily hours are noon to 4:00. And our own Therese and Nikki was honored with the Thomas Armani Hand Award. The award is the Coaches Association's highest award to professional educators from within the various CIAC and other gatherings. It's presented annually to the member of the education profession who has made significant contributions to high school athletics, while exhibiting the qualities of leadership, integrity, and professionalism. So shout out to Therese, making Granby look good.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions? I have one, Mike. If you don't know the answer to this, can you report back here? So, back on the LG benefits for the, the tax benefits, do you have a sense for how that compares in previous years, the number of people?
Very similar. I've been, Sue Altieri is bringing me up to speed, and I walked around thinking my previous town had the richest benefits, but they are more generous here in Granby. So the numbers are fairly consistent year over year. I'll, I'll try to dig some history, just to see if, maybe a few years ago, they were different, but, but I sense it's pretty consistent around 170 and around 300,000 for the local option.
Okay. The reason I ask is I know our Commission on Aging, and then there are a couple other individual volunteers, spent a tremendous amount of time about a year ago, putting together a brochure and promoting that benefit to make sure that seniors understood that it was available, and I just wanted to see if it had an immediate impact. That's, that's my last question. Anything else? All right, we'll do a quick first selectmen report, just two, two things. I want to say again, I'm always proud of our town, but how proud I was of our Memorial Day Parade. Most of the towns around us canceled because of the rain. We estimate that there were 1,000 people, plus or minus, who came out to honor our veterans and, and to offer their support for those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. And I'm really glad we did it. I'm glad we didn't cancel it and push through. Just something my wife Crystal said to me later in that day, she said, "You know, those people didn't come out to see a parade. They came out to honor those who have served and sacrificed for our country, and, and because all of them, most of them, followed us down to the, to the cemetery and listened to the speeches and the ceremonies." If you weren't So if you weren't there, it was a tremendous moment where the band had to go home because their instruments were getting wet. So we thought we were going to have to cancel singing or playing the National Anthem, and somebody in the crowd just said, well, we can sing it. And literally, the citizens of Granby sang the National Anthem in the pouring, pouring rain. It was really cool. Very proud of our town, and thank you all for your contributions and to the Legion and the Lions and the others who worked hard to make that a success. And then just very quickly, just a reminder, we'll push it out again through the notification system later this week. We have our next open house next Monday, two sessions, one in the morning, one in the evening. Fred's joining me in the morning, and Kelly's joining in the evening. So just a great, no agenda, come tell us what's on your mind, ask whatever questions you have, opportunity. So that's all I had. We'll start down here. Mark, any report?
No, nothing for me. Thank you.
Peggy?
Just a shout out to the music department in the school system. I went to Jazz in the Park last Friday, Friday or Thursday, and there were presentations by the Wells Road Jazz Band, and then the middle school jazz band, and then the high school jazz band. They were awesome, and there was a nice crowd there, it was a beautiful night. It was a great event, so I hope they continue doing that.
Awesome. Good.
Just echoing what Mark said, it was pretty impressive and always makes me proud of Granby when everyone started singing the National Anthem. So it was great.
All right, so first things first, the seniors are graduating this Friday. And so graduation is at 5:30, I believe. And after that, we will have Safe Grad.
Wait a minute, you believe?
I got a picture of that. We'll get back to us.
I'll get back to you. And after that, we'll have Safe Grad, thanks to everyone and every business who donated and was involved. And then Thursday, we'll have the top 10% luncheon for the seniors. And then I just wanted to say thank you guys so much again for welcoming on this board for the last two years. It's been really incredible, and I've learned a lot. So thank you.
So despite graduation taking up a lot of everyone's focus, there's still been a lot of success on the sports front, as Boys Lacrosse is still going, they're in the semifinals, they're going to play Summers on Wednesday, which is going to be a very hard-fought match. Also, the Halo Awards for the play this spring, sorry, excuse me, the musical this spring saw Luke Renicar win the Best Supporting Actor, and also our set managers, Ally, Dobert, Michaela, Munson, and Riley Kuster, were all recognized for their excellent work and great success in the musical this spring.
Awesome. Thank you.
Do you know what the Halo Awards are?
No.
The Halo Awards are like the Emmys for Connecticut.
That's awesome.
So we won two of the things for all of the schools in Connecticut. Really good.
Yep, that's awesome. Any questions? All right, thanks, guys. Good luck, going to count on you checking in. You're coming back, right, Ben? Are you helping to recruit somebody now to sit in the chair?
I don't know the system. I think it's partly dumb, but partly me. I don't feel blessed.
All right, well, we're going to tell you the system. Go ahead and recruit somebody to replace you.
I will. I'll find a good junior.
We want somebody in that chair when you guys come back.
I will.
All right. All right, next item on our agenda is public comment. Well, I don't see anybody on Zoom from the public, anybody here on address us, questions, concerns, comments? All right, we'll close the public session. We do have a need for a brief executive session to get an update on a collective bargaining issue. So I would ask for a motion to take us into an executive session to include the town manager and the board.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're ending our regular session. Thank you, everybody.